Okay.
Roll call.
Oh, that's.
Who's doing roll call?
Well, I'm just.
Okay.
Do the roll call and I'll write it down.
Sorry. Um, roll call vote. Jeff Zelke.
Here.
Hillary Stokowski.
Yeah.
Dr. Richards.
Here.
Lisa Cavaluna.
Here.
Jan.
Me.
Here.
Beesel, sorry. Rebecca Haynes, here. Okay, um, do you pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, um, so first up is the VHS report from our students and we have Olivia Hampton and Kelly Crum.
I think everyone knows who we are by now, but it's not on Kelly. I'm the principal of Barbara High School Student Council. President, not.
Do you want?
Oh, yes.
And I'm Olivia Winsmore, Vice President of Student Council.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so we've got a lot going on in our student council right now. So we have a snow coming dance coming up on February 4th. The pep assembly for that is going to be February 3rd. We are starting Snow Co. for putting great snow and our spirit week for the snow committee dance is the 30th through the 3rd. We also have Power Cup, which is like the guys play volleyball games now and that is on February 1st for the actual game. We are also continuing Archangel Closet. We have a dedicated to council member that is running the entire thing, like we're still getting donations and sorting through all that. And we have a base sale at 10:00 AM, so 1:00 PM on Saturday as well as.
The big sale is to raise more money for us to go to states.
Which we'll talk about later on what states is and everything. And then our Snow Co. Spirit Week is on the right there. So Monday is Angry Birds and each class will be assigned a different color of like Angry Birds. Tuesday is Dress Like a Rockstar. Wednesday is We Sports, so wear a jersey. And Thursday is Disco, Friday is Red and Blue. And I just realized I didn't even put the theme on here, but our theme is digital disco, arcade games and everything like that. So we just attended our regional conference, which was on Thursday, and we had a sophomore, Olivia Kentros, present her Michigan Student Voice presentation. And we also split up into different rooms for three showcases. We had Jack Luchdel, a junior, and Ben Meisner, a sophomore, present a showcase on our Sweet Week, which is like our Valentine's Day Spirit Week. And of course, we took back all these great ideas for our council to use. Some sports that we have going on, boys' basketball, girls' basketball, competitive cheerleading, wrestling, bowling, and swim. And just your average ones.
And then for our state conference, which will be held on February 25th or the 23rd. It's, oh, 27th, I'm sorry. Uh, it's at the Amway Grand Plaza Hotel in Grand Rapids. So we will watch like student showcase presentations from all over the state. And those presentations are from schools on ideas that are being implemented throughout the states, like state through like Charity Week, Kindness Weeks, and we had our Sweet Week. And then a Michigan Student Voice will watch more or listen to more of those. Um, it's a program designed to give students opportunity to present meaningful topics in a fast-paced like TED Talk presentation style. And then we also have like structured activities and then we have different awards, which will be Award of Excellence, our service project, and our Charity Week. And then we will listen to three keynote speakers and we'll do like student mixers. And then we have a dance on the very last night, which is a picture from last year. So it was neon theme. So all of us just come together in a big room, just have our little dance. And then what's going on in the school pretty much is just like the end of the semester is coming up on the 27th. And then our exams are the 24th through the 26th.
That's all. Well, thank you. We appreciate it. Anybody have any comments or question? Thanks, ladies.
We also have, sorry, not to interrupt you. We also have the, we're appreciation gifts that we would like to pass out.
All right.
Thank you.
It's okay. It's okay. One of these days, we'll get them.
She is so cute.
Set them right. You can set them over there, girls. Nice. Thanks, ladies.
Thank you so much.
We appreciate it. Thank you.
Very nice.
Um, well, before the superintendent's report, I just wanted to take a minute, um, just have a moment for, you know, uh, Black Hawk that we lost this week. Haley Alexandra, a 10th grade student at Brandon High School, passed away late last week due to unexpected complications from an illness. We extend, extend our deepest sympathies and prayers to Haley's family and friends as they grieve this profound loss. We would like to take a moment of silence to honor Haley now. Thank you. Um, okay, now we have Dr. Richards with the superintendent's report.
Thank you. Take different positions tonight. That's all right.
All right.
I don't want to get a good look at you.
Oh, dear.
I like to start my remarks this evening by sharing a familiar Chinese proverb. If you are planning for a year, sow rice. If you are planning for a decade, plant trees. If you are planning for a lifetime, educate people. Well, tonight, I have both the privilege and pleasure of acknowledging and recognizing a few individuals who are responsible for helping our young people plan for a lifetime. These leaders have been entrusted by the constituents of this community to provide our students with a high-quality education. I'm talking about the men and women serving on our school board, Jeff Zelke, Lois Stokowski, Rebecca Haynes, and Lisa Cavaluna, and, uh, you know, Herb Robinson couldn't be here, and Kim Smith-Galuga, I think is going to be here a little bit later. The month of January has been set aside as a time for us to recognize the hard work and dedication of the many school board members across the state who volunteer their time to public education. I'm gratified that one month out of a year is specifically designated as a time to show our appreciation for the work that you do in educating our young people, an endeavor that will truly last for a lifetime. In my opinion, you deserve more than one month. You deserve year-round recognition for your dedicated and committed service. You're like the rest of us and those here too. You have careers, you have families, you have household responsibilities, and yet you find the time to spend several hours a week preparing for and attending meetings, researching topics, talking with parents, teachers, students, staff members, and going to school events. You develop policies and make tough decisions on complex educational and social issues impacting the entire community. You bear responsibility for a multimillion-dollar budget for thousands of students and for multiple buildings. Your decisions affect what children learn, who will teach them, and what kinds of facilities house their classrooms. You are extraordinary people who voluntarily tackle the enormous job of governing our school district, knowing that your actions and your decisions must prepare today's students to be tomorrow's leaders. It is indeed an enormous responsibility, but one that you have accepted and embraced willingly. As public servants elected by the people of this community, you often receive very little recognition for the difficult job that you do. But having had the pleasure of working with each of you, it is clear that you are dedicated and that you are committed to the continuing success of our students and the school district. So on behalf of our entire school community, I want to take this opportunity to thank you for your countless hours that you spend ensuring our students get the best education possible. Thank you for caring about the children and the future of the Brandon School District. And now, as a, you know, small token of our appreciation, we have some, some gifts for you. Now, Maria was supposed to be my Vanna White and helping this process, but unfortunately, um, she is torn her Achilles and so she's giving this book for quite a few weeks and running around the, the office here in a little scooter. And we wish her well, but I have backup tonight. These are my two Vanna White selves. We wanted to present you these items. And we have items in the bags from all the buildings, from Oakwood, from Harvey Swanson, from the middle school to high school. And you also have something in there from central office and from the entire community and everybody. Why you have to rate your performance? So we salute you and we commend you for your dedication, your strong leadership, and for making a difference in the lives of our students. So thank you. All right, now, I'm, I'm supposed to have several other presenters for the next part of the superintendent's report. David Brenner couldn't be here. I thought Russ Martin might be here. And Dan Stevens was my, my backup because he's supposed to be presenting on the, uh, the personal finance requirement. Uh, but I think most of you probably know that Dan's wife was in a, probably a automobile accident a short time ago. She's fine, um, no serious injuries, but he needed to be there with her and help her through that process. So he's not going to be here this evening as well. I think we only have one presenter now. So, um, so as far as, um, the other presentations, as far as the, um, the overnight trips to Mackinac and to Orlando, you may want to just, we have another, in fact, it's my reminder of my notes, that we have a board meeting next Wednesday to look through the award recommendations. Then the following Monday on that 30th, we have another board meeting to act on, um, award contracts. So it may be that you want to postpone those two items or three items until the 30th and gives us a chance to get hold of, uh, Dan and Russ and David, see if they can make it on the 30th. So I'll leave that up to you since we can't make that formal presentation. Um, you do have a lot of information in your packet about the new high school graduation requirements, and you could act on that if, if you want to, or you could postpone that as well. It's, it's up to you. But we do have Christina Sulez here, right? Who is going to make a presentation and talk to you about the student leadership conference in Grand Rapids that we heard a little bit about earlier. Christine?
Hi, good evening. Thank you board members for everything you do for the students. We all appreciate it so much. Um, I didn't know I was presenting, but students did give me some information today about our state conference. Uh, we will be traveling using our Christian School buses to Grand Rapids and the public will travel on the 25th of February and then we'll return back on the 27th, which is a Monday. Students will miss Monday from school. However, I believe that the information that they gain by communicating with other student leaders across our state is very valuable, as well as learning how to network and plan for events. It's honestly the most fulfilling experience to see these kids come back and be able to add to their great knowledge that they already have, but to implement the new ideas within our school district. So we're very fortunate to have been able to go for the past five years or even before then, when I, before I took over. So we look forward to going and hope that we can get your approval to also go. Uh, I will be attending with the students. We have 16 students that will be attending. Um, also, Denna Shannon has agreed to be our mail chaperone for the weekend as well.
Do you have any questions about the trip? That sounds good.
Sounds great. Yeah.
It is, um, it is sponsored by the Michigan Association of Student Councils. Lots, lots to learn when we go.
All right. Well, thank you. And thank you for bringing that up. Okay. We need approval of the consent agenda. Oh, I'm so sorry. Just get that. Public comments and questions on the agenda business? None out there, Maria?
And no, I have no hands raised here.
Okay. Okay, seeing that there's no public comments, then our next item is of the Will of Consent Agenda. The Brandon Board of Education seems all items listed on the consent agenda non-controversial and routine in matter. The body will approve these items under one motion and there will be no discussion. A member of the Brandon Board of Education wishing to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request it. Be approved from the consent agenda and placed on regular agenda. The body will consider and discuss that item at the time. Can I get a motion?
Move the Brandon Board of Education to approve the consent of agenda as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay. Minutes of the December 12th to 2022 regular meeting and closed session approved. General fund accounts payable in the amount of 1.77, $1,766,323.47.
Yes, so we have a motion on the table.
Oh, shoot. I'm sorry. Yes.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
That falls under the consent agenda. So you're okay.
Okay. Now we get a roll call vote. Okay. Jeff Zelke.
Yes.
Hillary Stokowski.
Yes.
Rebecca Haynes, yes. Lisa Cavaluna, yes. That's all of us. Okay. Approved. Um, information and discussion items, board report. Um. We do not have a board report today. Um, just, we don't have any new items to discuss. This is, okay. Um, finance report.
Yeah, I just wanted to update the board. I know we're meeting next Wednesday with Brian and today was the bid opening. It was moved back last Thursday to today. Uh, Brian Smolak was there, architect, as well as two people from the construction and forecast, Mark Evans and myself attended the business meeting. Um, things went pretty good. There are some areas where we didn't get the bids we had hoped. So, um, they're going to be interviewing. And then early next week, Dr. Richards and myself will be meeting with Brian and Mark Evans to discuss some of the questions that arose from today's bids so that we're all on the same page for, um, the meeting and the presentation.
That's it. Any questions? Our action items, um. Okay, so we need to appoint, um, a temporary chairperson for election for president.
Yes.
Yes.
Move that Maria Sheringe serve as temporary chairperson for this election of a president.
We have a second. Support.
Alrighty, on to action item B, election of president. Do we have any nominations for president? Yes, I nominate Rebecca Haynes for the role of president for 2023. We have a second.
I'll say.
Roll call vote.
Yeah, Rebecca.
No, you.
You've been nominated, defined as president. Um, let's do a roll call vote since we do have a nomination and support. Do a roll call vote here. Jeff Zelke.
Yes.
Hillary Stokowski.
Yes.
Rebecca Haynes.
Yes.
Lisa Cavaluna.
Yes.
Okay. Rebecca, congratulations. You are now president of Brandon Board of Education. And, uh. Well, now Rebecca, you have the floor to do the rest of the elections.
Okay, so our second, um, our, our next one is the election of vice president. Uh, we have a motion for vice president.
I move to elect Hillary Stokowski as vice president for 2023 calendar year, January 1 through December 31, 2023.
I'll say.
Sorry, I'm wearing two hats. Okay, roll call vote. Jeff Zelke.
Yes.
Hillary Stokowski. Rebecca Haynes, yes. Lisa Cavaluna, yes. The next one, the election of secretary. Do we have a motion?
Move to elect Jeff Zelke as secretary for the 2023 calendar year, January 1, December 31, 2023.
Do you have a support?
Support.
Roll call vote. Jeff Zelke.
Yes.
Hillary Stokowski.
Yes.
Rebecca Haynes, yes. Lisa Cavaluna, yes. The last one, or no, yes. Okay. Um, the last is the election of treasurer. Do we have a motion?
Move to elect Kim Smith-Kalaga as treasurer for the 2023 calendar year, January 1 through December 31, 2023.
Second. Support. Um, okay, and roll call vote. Jeff Zelke.
Yes.
Hillary Stokowski.
Yes.
Rebecca Haynes, yes. Lisa Cavaluna.
Yes.
All right, so we have our board now. Um, okay, the next motion is, um, I just want to stop here for a second. And, um, we had, we have an open position on our board for another candidate and we had two, um, letters of intent submitted. Um, so I want to just read a little bit about that before we move on. I want to thank both Donna Ferrera and Jane Burkett for submitting letters of intent to become members of the Brandon Board of Education. Both candidates show a dedication and desire to see success in the Brandon School District and our community as a whole. We, as a board, have had the opportunity to read their letters of interest, but I want to share some of the highlights from those letters with the public. Donna's commitment to our community includes serving as chair for the ZBA, treasurer for her HOA, and architectural committee, and is currently serving her eighth term as, as the senior planning commissioner of the township. Donna has also been employed as township bookkeeper under several township supervisors. Jane has been serving in real estate in our community for the last 22 years while living in Brandon. She has served on the executive board of the BGYA since 2009. Jane's four children attended and graduated from Brandon School District, moving on to secondary education and the trades. She currently has a grandchild enrolled in the preschool program here in Brandon. We are grateful to be part of a community where so many members are invested in helping it thrive. More so, we are happy to have their commitment extended to extend to our Board of Education. Um, do we, okay, so I'm gonna just call on Jeff, who would you like to move forward?
I'd like to move forward, Jane.
All right. Hillary, I would also like to move forward with Jane. Lisa? As well, moving forward with Jane is.
Okay.
At this time.
And I as well would like to move forward, Jane. Um, so, uh, the next one is selection of, um, new Brandon Board of Education member. Do I have a motion?
Move the Brandon Board of Education approved to select Jane Burkett as a member of the Board of Education of Brandon School District beginning January 16th, 2023, with term ending December 31st, 2024.
Support.
Roll call vote. Jeff Zelke.
Yes.
Hillary Stokowski.
Yes.
Rebecca Haynes, yes. Lisa Cavaluna.
Yes.
All right. Welcome, Jane. She's here. I already have gifts for you, Jane. Okay, um, all right. Um, the next one is resolution to set date, time, and place for regular monthly meetings.
Move the Brandon Board of Education, uh, wait, what? Oh, yeah. Move the Brandon Board of Education, adopt the resolution as presented.
Support. Okay, roll call vote. Jeff Zelke.
Yes.
Hillary Stokowski.
Yes.
Lisa Cavaluna.
Yes.
Rebecca Haynes. Approved. Okay, the next is request approval of depositories for school funds.
Move to name Waterford Bank, formerly Clarkson State Bank, the Bank of New York U.S. Bank, Michigan School District Liquid Asset Fund Plus, and Fifth Third Bank as depositories for Brandon School District and Michigan School District Liquid Asset Fund Plus as the authorized investment broker.
Support. All right, roll call vote. Jeff Zelke.
Yes.
Hillary Stokowski.
Yes.
Lisa Cavaluna.
Yes.
Rebecca Haynes. Uh, designate person to serve as contracting agent.
Move the Brandon Board of Education designate the interim superintendent of schools to serve as contracting agent to sign agreements and contracts for the Brandon School District.
Support. All right, roll call vote. Jeff Zelke.
Yes.
Hillary Stokowski.
Yes.
Lisa Cavaluna.
Yes.
Rebecca Haynes. Yes. Oh, shoot. Yes. Designate persons authorized to sign checks.
Move the Brandon Board of Education designate the interim superintendent of schools or the Board of Education president as the authorized person to sign checks for the Brandon School District.
Different?
Yeah. Just serve as contracting agent.
I. That's okay. Okay. We'll skip back to I. Designate person to serve as contracting agent.
Move the Brandon Board of Education designate the interim superintendent of schools to serve as contracting agent to sign agreements and contracts for Brandon School District.
Support. Roll call vote. Jeff Zelke.
Yes.
Hillary Stokowski.
Yes.
Lisa Cavaluna.
Yes.
Rebecca Haynes, yes. Now, designate persons authorized to sign checks.
Move the Brandon Board of Education designate the interim superintendent of schools or the Board of Education president as the authorized person to sign checks for Brandon School District.
Support. Roll call. Jeff Zelke.
Yes.
Hillary Stokowski.
Yes.
Lisa Cavaluna.
Yes.
Rebecca Haynes, yes. Designate person authorized to sign purchase orders.
Move the Brandon Board of Education designate the executive director of business services as the authorized person to sign purchase orders for Brandon School District.
Roll call vote. Jeff Zelke.
Yes.
Oh, wait. No support. Sorry.
It's okay.
No support.
We can jump in. Who's got support for it?
No support.
Okay. Jeff Zelke.
Yes.
Hillary Stokowski.
Yes.
Lisa Cavaluna.
Yes.
Rebecca Haynes, yes. Designate person to serve as electronic transfer officer.
Move the Brandon Board of Education designate the executive director of business services as the authorized electronic transfer officer for Brandon School District. as the authorized electronic transfer officer for Brandon School District.
Support.
Roll call vote. Jeff Silky?
Yes.
Hillary Stokowski?
Yes.
Lisa Cataluna?
Yes.
Rebecca Haynes?
Yes.
Establish fees charged for individuals requesting notice of board meetings.
Move the Brandon Board of Education establish a fee of $1 per notice via postal mail for individuals requesting notice of board meetings.
Support. Roll call vote. Jeff Silky?
Yes.
Please, Hillary Stokowski?
Yes.
Lisa Cataluna?
Yes.
Rebecca Haynes?
Yes.
Establish board compensation.
Move the board, oops, start over. Move the Brandon Board of Education establish $0 per member as compensation for the 2023 calendar year, January 1 to December 31, 2023.
Support. Roll call vote. Jeff Silky?
Yes.
Hillary Stokowski?
Yes.
Lisa Cataluna?
Yes.
Rebecca Haynes?
Yes.
Designate person to post vacancies and accept resignations.
Move the Brandon Board of Education approve the interim superintendent of schools or his or her designate to post vacancies and accept resignations.
Support. Roll call vote. Jeff Silky?
Yes.
Hillary Stokowski?
Yes.
Lisa Cataluna?
Yes.
Rebecca Haynes?
Yes.
Designate person to post public notices.
Move the Brandon Board of Education approve the interim superintendent of schools as his or her, excuse me, apologies, or his or her designate to post public notices.
Support. Roll call vote. Jeff Silky?
Yes.
Hillary Stokowski?
Yes.
Lisa Cataluna?
Rebecca.
Rebecca Haynes?
Yes.
Delegation of recording secretary duties.
I, Jeff Silky, is secretary of the school board. Designate Maria Shrubber as serving recording secretary for Brandon Board of Education.
Support. Roll call vote. Jeff Silky?
Yes.
Hillary Stokowski?
Yes.
Lisa Cataluna?
Yes.
Rebecca Haynes?
Yes.
Assignment of board education representative to MASC.
Move the, can I do it?
Yeah.
Okay. Move the Brandon Board of Education appoint Hillary Stokowski as its representative to the Michigan Association of School Boards.
Support. Roll call vote. Jeff Silky?
Yes.
Hillary Stokowski?
Yes.
Lisa Cataluna?
Yes.
Rebecca Haynes?
Yes.
Assignment of board of education representative to the Oakland County Intermediate School District, Intermediate School District and Governance Relations Committee.
Move the Brandon Board of Education appoint Kim Smith Colaga as its representative to the Oakland County Intermediate School District and Governance Relations Committee.
Support.
Roll call vote. Jeff Silky?
Yes.
Hillary Stokowski?
Yes.
Lisa Cataluna?
Yes.
Rebecca Haynes?
Yes.
Appointment of designated spokesperson for the Board of Education.
Move the Brandon Board of Education president designate be appointed the designated spokesperson for the Board of Education.
Support. Roll call vote. Jeff Silky?
Yes.
Hillary Stokowski?
Yes.
Lisa Cataluna?
Yes.
Rebecca Haynes?
Yes.
Approval of authorized purchase card users.
Move the Brandon Board of Education approve the employee position titles authorized to use district credit debit purchase cards in conducting of district business as presented.
Support. Roll call vote. Jeff Silky? Hillary Stokowski?
Yes.
Lisa Cataluna?
Yes.
Rebecca Haynes?
Yes.
Approval of human resource report.
Move the Brandon Board of Education approve the human resource report as presented.
Support.
Roll call vote. Jeff Silky?
Yes.
Hillary Stokowski?
Yes.
Lisa Cataluna?
Yes.
Rebecca Haynes?
Yes.
Approval of graduation requirement, personal finance course.
Move the Brandon Board of Education approve the graduation requirement, personal finance course, starting with the graduating class of 2027.
Support. Roll call vote. Jeff Silky?
Yes.
Hillary Stokowski?
Yes.
Lisa Cataluna?
Yes.
Rebecca Haynes?
Yes.
Approval of DMBIR contract addendum.
Move the Brandon Board of Education approve the DMBIR contract agreement as presented.
Support. Roll call vote. Jeff Silky?
Yes.
Hillary Stokowski?
Yes.
Lisa Cataluna?
Yes.
Rebecca Haynes?
Yes.
Approval of retaining services with school law firms, Clark Hill and Thurn Law.
Move the Brandon Board of Education approve retaining services with loss with school law firms, Clark Hill and Thru Law.
Support. Roll call vote. Jeff Silky?
Yes.
Hillary Stokowski?
Yes.
Lisa Cataluna?
Yes.
Rebecca Haynes?
Yes.
Approval to accept Niola policy updates 37.1.
Move the Brandon Board of Education approve to accept Niola policy updates 37.1 as presented.
Support. Roll call vote. Jeff Silky?
Yes.
Hillary Stokowski?
Yes.
Lisa Cataluna?
Yes.
Rebecca Haynes?
Yes.
Approval of VMS Van Inquire Overnight Trip to Mackinac Island. Do we have any, do we want to?
Table notes on it.
Table this. They were supposed to represent. Do we wanna?
Are there any, do we, do any of us happen to know if there are any actions that they need to take before we would, I know it's just next week, but anything that needs to happen this week that they would require our authorization to move forward with, to actually do this? Do we know anything?
I don't know.
Okay.
Yes, you did know.
Okay. The only, you know, thing that I would throw out there is if they need anything before that for committing or what have you.
Right.
I think we'll table it.
Okay.
Yeah, is my, my opinion, subject to everybody else's.
Are you okay with tabling that, or?
Yep.
Yes.
There's only four of us.
So we're gonna table that. And then would that be the same, how do we, do we wanna discuss the next, which would be the extent of VHS Van Inquire Overnight Extended Trip to Orlando?
Same question for me.
Right.
I suppose, you know, if somebody wants to reach out to either of the, you know, spearheaders of those efforts, maybe tomorrow, and ask the question if they really need some action taken by us. I just wanna, understanding life happens and they're not here. I also don't want it to get in their way of of moving along. So if someone could reach out tomorrow and just ask if they need our action, but subject to that, I, my thought is to table it.
Okay. And the last one. Approval of VHS Student Council Overnight Trip to MASC/MATHS Conference.
Move the Brandon Board of Education approve the Student Council Overnight Trip to the MASC/MATHS Student Leadership Conference in Grand Rapids, Michigan, February 25 through 27, 2023, as presented.
Second.
Roll call vote. Jeff Silky?
Yes.
Hillary Stokowski?
Yes.
Lisa Cataluna?
Yes.
Jeff Sil, or Rebecca Haynes?
Yes.
All right. Let's do that. Any citizens input?
No hands raised here.
None there.
None.
All right then, moving on. Closed session, security planning. Can I get a motion?
Move the Brandon Board of Education approve to enter a closed session for the purpose of security planning as presented.
Support. Roll call vote. Jeff Silky?
Yes.
Hillary Stokowski?
Yes.
Lisa Cataluna?
Yes.
Rebecca Haynes?
Yes.
Meeting. Done. Meeting adjourned. Or this closed session.
Just, yeah.